David. All right, thank you. Liz, I think you're having technical difficulty on your end. David? Do you have something to say at this time?
You talking to me Kathy? No, not at this time, no.
Liz got knocked off of Zoom. She wants to be back in soon, so she's probably trying to get back in.
Yeah, Lee, can I interrupt one sec Kathy? Lisa just texted me, she's having a hard time getting on too. So I don't know.
Okay. Frank, did you hear? Okay. Frank is working on it.
This is Ed Betza. I couldn't get on for a while, then Renee sent me a link and I clicked on that and it worked without any problem.
Renee, are you able to forward your link to Liz again? Maybe she can have an easier time of it.
Do you want me to do that?
Thank you, Ed.
I did it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Renee, you're awesome.
The time is the challenge right now because we're still up in the air as to the regulations on how to spend the federal money that's coming in. So Michael had brought up a good question to me today about perhaps we could wait on purchasing some police cars. And then I had talked to Paul about it. Paul, do you want to mention how our conversation went this afternoon on that?
Oh, sorry. Two cars on the agenda tomorrow, you're going to see one of them's a 93 and one of them's like an 01. Neither one of them are going to pass inspection this year. They're both being used in the ID division. And our thinking on all this is, number one, we're going to have to replace these cars because they're both being actively used. And two, if we're allowed to, you know, use that money that Kathy mentioned, we would just reimburse ourselves for what we had spent. So, and that's happened before in a multitude of different grants or monies that we've received. So that, I hope that answers that question. We're just looking at, we need to, we need to fill a couple slots in the fleet and when we get the money, if we're allowed to use the money, then we will just reimburse ourselves.
Paul, is there any timeframe that we will be more informed on how we can spend this money?
Kathy, we've watched a couple, a couple webinars from the League of Cities and Lisa grabbed one from, I think it was Department of Justice or HUD or one of those. And I know Renee had talked to a couple people. They're not, no, I'm going to say not an affirmative, this is what you can do and this is what you can do today or tomorrow. It's, you know, a lot of it's up in the air and it might be determined, it might be determined tomorrow, it might not be till next week or it might not be for two, I don't, I don't know. So me even throwing out this week, next week, don't know. But I would assume it's going to be soon because they're planning on divvying up that money real shortly. So, I mean, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to give us the money without some kind of guidance. We do know that everything we've read, the, the reporting for this, we're going to have to justify everything we spend the money on. So if the rules say we're allowed to buy police cars, we can't buy a finance department Corvette. Okay, nobody laughed at my joke.
I did, I did.
I thought it was funny. But, you know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to justify what we spend the money on. We're going to have to do this right and we're going to have, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of money. I think somebody had mentioned, maybe it was Renee, you know, that I'm not saying that the finance department is going to have a hard time with this or the economic development department's going to have a hard time with this. But there's going to be a lot of reporting requirements as far as this goes. So we're, you know, we're going to need one, we're going to need some guidance and two, we're going to need some man hour or woman hour help as far as this goes, getting this done. And I know Debbie Smith's team, you know, they'll do a yeoman's work as far as what we can spend the money on, how we can spend the money. But, you know, the reporting's always going to just, it's going to end up down in our lap, so we'll do our best and as soon as we know, obviously you'll know. Because I think one of Liz's questions was that was, would council have a say in what went on? And obviously since you as a group passed the budget, you know, council always has the final say in how money is spent. As the administrator of the budget, you know, the mayor will be able to, you know, give you his wishes. But, you know, there'll have to be some, some, some coming meeting of the minds between the two groups.
Right. Now council will have a definite say too on how that money will be spent. It needs our approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So can somebody recap though where we're at in terms of the American Rescue Plan, plan? And as I said before I got knocked off of Zoom, that I'm well aware that we have to wait for the regulations from the US Treasury Department. But I think the administration needs to know that we are getting questioned about this and we need to be able to speak intelligently when somebody from TV or the newspaper calls us. You know, people want to know what our priorities are. And in my mind, this really is tied into that $15 million that we've set aside for the general fund for the, for the, you know, to carry us through for the next couple of years. That's why I wanted to know how much of that would be like structural deficit? And how much of that debt is related to the pandemic?
We were just touching base a little bit on that Liz. And Paul said that we definitely don't know anything yet. But hopefully soon and we will definitely need to have our approval as a council as to how that money is spending, are going to be spent.
But let's say we didn't have the money coming from the federal government. Say we didn't have the money. We had a plan for how we're going to use the water lease. But am I correct that having additional money from the federal, from this new law could change that $15 million that we are putting aside for the general fund? I mean, just in general, it just, not talking general fund, it seems in general that it would be logical that, you know, it's not a windfall because we have, you know, COVID has hit municipalities really hard. But I just want a simple answer to a simple question.
Well, one of the
maybe change what we do with that $15 million since we are getting money from the American Rescue Plan? That's my question.
Well, the $15 million is being earmarked for general fund purposes, which are general operating expenses. Salaries, papers, pens, pencils, gasoline, utilities. Again, we go back to the, the money we're going to receive, we have not got a determination yet. Now, one determination we did get was we're not going to be able to use it for pension related expenses. We can't use it for the MMO. We don't know for a fact whether or not we can use it for salaries or, or utilities or papers, pens and pencils. Remembering, we do not budget capital expenses, police cars, fire trucks, you know, capital expenditures as far as the buildings go, those aren't budgeted in the general fund. So the $15 million is going to be used in the general fund. The other monies that we could use for CDBG programs, for capital expenses, wherever we're going to put that, that would not be general fund expenses.
Okay, let me phrase it a different way. And also Frank wanted me to let the audience know that there are problems with the streaming today, so tonight. So if anybody, we're trying to get those technical issues fixed. Let me put it a different way. Let's say COVID never happened, never happened. Would we still have that, that $15 million gap for the next couple of years? Let's, let's take COVID out of the equation. Would we still need, would we still have, have, be looking at those, that deficit for the next three years that we're going to use the $15 million for? That's all I'm trying to figure out.
As I said at budget time, our income tax collections are down about 4% that this, for this year pro forma, based on what, you know, the Congressional Budget Office said was going to happen this year. You brought it up quite a few times last year, amusement tax collections, we budgeted less. So there are line items that are going to be less this year due to the pandemic.
You've got a great question and I have to go back to last year when I asked three different times to get a real budget without the water money in it, so we know where we're at. I think Liz is coming from this on the other side, same way. That's 15 million or 12 million sitting in there. That doesn't have to be there, we should put it back into the debt pool. That's, that's my point anyway. Liz, am I right there? She going again?
Yeah, that's a different way of asking it, yes.
Same thing, yeah. We don't know what kind of shape we're in because there's all kinds of money floating around. And until we know what that 79 is, down for COVID, I would imagine with the warmer clothes, with the civic center clothes, with the Sea Wolves not playing, parking, all that kind of, everything is down. Those are losses. So those are COVID losses that we should be able to recoup. And if that's the case, then be prudent with future generations of money.
Tim, Senate has graciously been invited, we've been having him on. I was wondering, Tim, if you could tell us about how you have written the ordinance for the water money?
Okay, Kathy, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I did a draft of the ordinance and, and the ordinance outlined several things. First, and I'm going to turn to page two, if you have it in front of you. I'm in the third whereas clause from the top. In that paragraph, it identifies all your outstanding bonds that you have presently. And as I understand, the purpose is to take a portion of those funds. And I don't know exactly that amount, but I think it's around 79, 80 million dollars. I'll just use that amount for purposes of an example. And it indicates that you're going to refund and defees those bonds by taking that money and, and putting it into an escrow account. And the way we do that, you know, we follow the GASB statement number seven and the FASB statement number 76 in regard to defeasance and refundings. And what that requires you to do is to take that money, invest it in government obligations backed by the United States government and then place those government obligations and those funds in an escrow account, typically with the paying agent, who has already been approved by city council at the time you issued those bonds, identifying who that paying agent is. And that paying agent for all these bonds is the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company. As they are a trust company that typically pays off bonds and has the mechanisms and procedures and people in place to pay off bonds, which they do on a daily basis. And there's only a few banks that have those type of trust companies in place, one being the Bank of New York. You know, if you recall way back when PNC used to have a trust company, they sold their trust company to JP Morgan. JP Morgan sold their trust company to the Bank of New York. So in the banking business, all these trust companies have been gobbled up by a few separate trust companies. So we have the Bank of New York as, as probably the main trust company as paying agent. And they're designated as your paying agent on all your bonds. So what we would do is in regard to the refunding, as I said, we would go out into the market. We would buy government securities, we would place them in an escrow fund in, in the hands of the Bank of New York. The Bank of New York then would pay those bonds off as they come due. The other thing that the, the ordinance indicates, so that's what the ordinance says you're going to do. There's a refunding component. And to stick with the ordinance in regard to the refunding component. So you would do that, you need a verification agent or an, you need an escrow agent, which would be the Bank of New York. You need a verification agent, which in the ordinance I have in section seven on page three is Zelenka and Axelrod, the accountants who would then look at the investments that you purchased and do a verification report assuring that the amount of money you put in there is sufficient. At the time these bonds would become due and payable, that it is sufficient to pay off the bonds. So that's what they do and why we need them is to ensure that you have enough money in the accounts to pay off those bonds. The other entity that's being designated is myself as bond counsel. My role is to ensure that you do the defeasance and the payoffs in appropriate manner in accordance with those accounting principles. And also to put together closing documents in regard to the refunding. And those closing documents would include a number of different things. Number one would be the city ordinance. Number two, we would have to file with DCD in regard to your debt. And what we would do is we file, submit to the DCD advising that you've paid off all this debt and identify what's paid off and what's not paid off, what's defeased and what's not defeased. Because they keep track of your debt, so we have a filing with them. You need an escrow deposit agreement with the Bank of New York and we would prepare that. As I indicated previously, there's a verification report. There's a defeasance opinion, which is my opinion to the city advising that you've done everything right in accordance with the bonds themselves to defees those bonds. There's a solicitor's opinion from Ed Betza that is necessary. Basically providing the, the structure of the city and that you've done everything in accordance with the city ordinances in order to take these steps. We also then prepared notices of defeasance and redemption. Those actually go out to the bondholders and advise them that, you know, those bonds are being defeased or refunded. There's a reportable event notice that's filed under the Security Exchange Commission, which goes to their electronic filing advising that you've refunded those bonds. And there's obviously a certificate in regard to the governmental securities that you purchased with those money. So that's, that's the refunding side of things and that's how that works. The other section in the ordinance that's in there in section two on page two is the capital projects and general fund expenses, which you've been discussing. And, and again, that's, that's up to city council and the mayor and, and Paul to determine what that appropriate amount is to put in there. Those would be separately set forth into exhibits, exhibits A and B, which I don't have. But I would, once you provide those to me, then I'll be able to attach them to the ordinance and, and pass it. It does require two readings, as it always does. We do first reading and then second reading. I would appropriately advertise the ordinance in advance to ensure, you know, you're following your rules. So that's, from my viewpoint, that's in a nutshell, what you obviously need to discuss and determine is, are those two schedules, schedule A and schedule B? Schedule A being all the bonds you're going to refund and, and what amount? And then schedule B would be the capital projects and general fund expenses that you want to use with the water money.
Somebody object to, I mean, you, you talk about the bonds being refunded. So are some of them being paid off earlier than the bondholder would have expected? And would there ever be a case where someone would object to defeasance? I, I don't know, it just, I just wondered.
No. I, I don't think, I, I mean, I haven't gone through exactly, I think the, the goal is to defees, is to pay off those bonds that would be due, to be paid off in accordance with the terms of the bonds under the redemption schedule. There, so there's those parts that you would actually redeem based on the bond itself. And that you're allowed. And then there's these other ones that you can't pay off at present time, but, but you have the ability to advance refund and, and put the money in the escrow. And that, that is also a proper method of, of defeating bonds. And I don't think a bondholder can object because ultimately in that situation, the bondholder is getting paid what he was due. Those that are redeemed early, they were always subject to redemption early in accordance with the bonds. And so when the bondholder bought them, he bought them with the knowledge that there's a possibility that they would be redeemed early. So again, no objection there.
Do we have a total figure on the number of millions that we're paying back with these bonds? Kind of got lost in the whereas, Tim, that's why I'm asking that question. Now we're setting aside with 79 million, how many millions?
And let me answer that. And that's the schedule I sent you this afternoon. If we use $79 million, we're going to pay down about $86.3 million worth of debt. That's at the rates as they were about a week or so ago. So we were looking at that point in time at about a $7.3 million savings. Now, with the market changing, you know, every day, maybe Jay could answer that question a little bit better. But that, that's the way the schedules were a week or two ago. That's the one I sent you this afternoon. The typing on the bottom of it. Okay.
Paul, once again, I answered the question on my end, maybe you're answering just then. Is this a time sensitive decision between administration and council? We make this, are we losing money if we don't move this money sooner?
Well, if the market moves in a, in a way that's not advantageous to us, then yes, it, it would be harmful to us.
But those are what we're seeing right now.
You're, you're correct there. Yes.
And I guess then it goes back to that 79 million, which we don't know or how much of that could actually help us as a city financially.
You know, I don't want to sit on this mic too long either, but that being said, I still believe, just like some of my colleagues, that until we know where that 79 million comes into play, maybe we shouldn't rush into paying out this debt and having that, what is it, 11 million, 15 million left there for future audits and ask them to do that, what happens?
Does Jay have any words of advice for us?
I was thinking, I have a question too, Paul. Money that we're coming in for COVID, if we find out we can use that and we put this money in the New York bank and we take that 12 million out, that's set for the general fund now and add that to the money, knowing that we have COVID money covered in?
But Ed, I, I, yes, I mean, but that, it, there's a lot of ifs involved there, but I mean, the, I don't even want to be, say this out loud, but if, yes, it's possible if the 79 million were allowed to be, I mean, I mean, these are all, yes, if that 79 million were allowed to be used for general fund operating expenses, which nowhere anyone's seen that that can possibly be going on. But if, then yeah, we could use that 15 million to pay down more debt. But, but, but you're asking a question that at this point in time, we're not allowed to use that money in that way.
We don't know.
Look, Jimmy. Pardon me?
We can fund our losses with that COVID money, I think.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about. Get millions out of that, what we lost during the pandemic.
Yes.
It should be a pile of cash.
That's correct. But we need a, we need a full determination on, I mean, we've, we've read that. We need a full determination, we need a full determination on what it means for losses. I mean, we know that we, we lost in an average year's collections, a couple million dollars in income taxes last year. We know that. You know, we, we have a history of this and we budgeted it and we came up a couple million dollars short. The unemployment rates showed that that was the right amount that where we should have been. But we need an absolute determination that says that is what the law says, that is what the rule says and the, the calculation is based on that. So but the mayor, and I'm going to speak for the mayor, he, I, I know he jumped off, but he has said that many times. If there's money left over a year, two years, three years, four years from now, his mindset was always that, you know, we were going to use that money to pay down debt. And if there was money left over some way from form, we were going to pay down debt with it. So I think that question was answered months ago by the mayor.
Paul and Tim, I wondered if you might be able to, I would think, I'm not one who says I want to hold on to this. I, I think we ought to get this moving. Other than my questions about that 15 mil. But could either or both of you talk about the advantages we might reap in terms of paying down that debt? I would think that that it would, it would help our outlook in terms of, you know, how, how the outside rating groups view us. But of course, I'm not an expert on that. But Tim, I know you've done, you, you have done lots of, of bond work. So maybe you could speak to that in lay terms that, that we could understand, so.
Sure, I, I, the less debt you have, the more the rating agency and, and that you're paying off the debt, they would look at you favorably. But I think, I, I do believe that Jay Wanger is on the, well, I thought he was on the call and he'd probably be even a better person to ask that question if Jay's on there.
His phone is, what are bond rating now? A stable.
Tim, I want to thank you so much for explaining in layman's terms, the ordinance. Now, would this have to change if we waited? Do you have to change it up somehow?
Do you have to change it up somehow?
No, there's, there's nothing, I I mean, there might be some dates or something on it, but other than that, it it's pretty much set. I I circulated it around to Jay Wanger in advance and Paul and and the mayor, and I think everybody got a chance to look at it. I'm sorry. Uh, so I think we're in pretty good shape. The only thing, as I said earlier, is missing is Exhibits A and B, which is what your your folks are are debating here a little bit, and uh, once you come to some solution on that, uh, I'm ready to go.
Thank you. I I agree with Liz. I think this is a good thing, and I would love to have counsel affirm this as well.
I I wanted to bring that up also, is that um, I think that the sooner, the better that we pay off bonds, because it's gonna be better, because we're gonna have less, less money. We 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 want to pay off the debt. And and the quicker we do that and not fuss around with it, because that that's the best use of the money from what I'm hearing. I'm not a financial expert. But we have long-term debt. The quicker we pay that off, the better it is for the city. That's what I keep hearing. Um, so I keep on thinking of maximizing paying off debt, no matter what we do here, um, to to the advantage of the city, to 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 help out the city in the end. I I kind of think that's the best decision at this point.
Are you changing your mind from what you told me before we talked on Friday? When you said you didn't want to vote on this tomorrow?
Oh, no, no, I'm I'm still, I'm still, uh, I still have questions uh about this. I'm still kind of meandering in my mind. But I'm just saying, I don't think we should put it off for a long time. Guys, I still, I'm still kind of a uh trying to get it set in my head at about about this. You're you're correct. I'm still, I'm I'm still kind of thinking about it, but what I'm saying is that I don't want to wait too long. I just want to make sure we fully understand and get all our questions answered and not rush anything. So yeah, I I agree, Ed, I'm not changing my story at all. I'm just trying to uh uh confirm that I believe we need to pay it off, but make sure it's the right decision and not wait too long. And I'm I'm thinking, um, you know, within the next couple of weeks after we get our questions answered, and if that's the right decision to make, uh, then we need to uh move forward. That's that's my thought.
I mean, I believe.
What does that do for your, your?
Go ahead. You on, Mike?
Yeah, this is Michael Keys here. Yeah, uh, I'm not opposed to paying off the debt. My question is, giving it to the payee uh in it so far in advance, because I don't see no upside to that.
Tim, would you speak to that from a legal perspective?
Uh, yeah, I I think.
I mean, I can, I'd like to talk to it from the financial statement perspective, but if you go first, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no problem at all. Uh, I uh from, if you wanted to defees the bonds, legally defees the bonds, you have to provide the money to the paying agent in an escrow in advance. Uh, if you don't do that, then those bonds are not considered defeased, and therefore you are not paying off debt. Uh, and so that debt will still be on your records, even if if you put it in another bank account, that does not defees the bonds. Uh, you you have to defees them, and you have to invest the money in governmental securities. That's the way you have to do it in order to have it legally recognized as being defeased. And I'll turn to Paul as to the financial side.
Well, I, Tim, you just, you you made the statement for me. Unless the bonds are legally defeased, they will not be, they will still be on our financial statements. They will not come off our financial statements. Um, every time I go to Standard and Poor's, they're gonna ask me, how much debt do you have? And I'm gonna say, we still have, you know, a hundred sixty-seven million dollars worth of debt, and we'll take it from there. So I think, Tim, well put. Thank you.
This, this is Ed Bettsa. There's an additional layer here. Um, and it's not just defeating the bonds, it's also spending the money now. If you put this money in a bank account, there is nothing that prohibits a future counsel from coming at it from a completely different perspective and spending that money. And this counsel has repeatedly said that we want to make sure when we do this deal and we get the money, that we actually devote that money toward the debt. By doing it this way, as both Mr. Senate and Mr. Lichtenwalder have said, we're defeating the bonds. But you're also taking it out of any potential use in a different manner. You're spending the money now.
My, thank you very much. My suggestion would be that we get this on our next meeting, not tomorrow, but the next one in April. It needs two votes, and then May, we would have this taken care of. I thank you so much, Ed, for clarifying that for us.
I'm sorry, I missed part of your explanation. I was traveling and I was, we hit a tunnel. If you could uh go back over the last couple minutes, please.
I'll, I'll take a shot. I I thought it was rather eloquent there in that one shot. I gotta do it again, but. Mr. Keys, you ra- you raise a good point, and that is, what are we getting out of the money just sitting there? And I think that both Mr. Senate and Mr. Lichtenwalder gave an explanation that you're actually getting rid of the bonds. You're defeating the bonds, which takes it off our our financial rolls. I'm looking at it from a different perspective. Counsel has repeatedly said, we don't want to take this water money and have it be used for something other than debt. Well, if you just simply stick it in a bank account, you don't control that money. Whatever future counsel decides is what happens. If you want to spend the money now on debt, you need to do it now by by defeating the bonds. And I think it solves your biggest problem, that could somebody raid the account and spend it on something that counsel doesn't support. This would prevent that, because you're actually gonna get rid of the bonds then and there. Even though you're concerned, Mr. Keys, if it's just kind of sitting there at a low interest rate, it's dead accurate. It it it's a problem, but we're stuck with that. But you're now devoting that money, it's spent, the bonds are addressed.
I, okay, thank you for the explanation. Um, it's just, uh, the reason why it's a problem with me is because as of right now, our budget is out of alignment. We're spending more money than we're bringing in, and so and I'm not saying, I agree with Dave Ramsey, debt is dumb, but it's, if you put all your money toward debt, and then we come to a situation where we already know our ba- our our annual balance sheet is not balanced, you know, if we need more money, we have to go back to the taxpayers, and that's the problem I have with the process.
I I do want to chime in on this, because this is one of the things that we're doing as a follow-up to the, as as implementing the recommendations from the um PFM report, you know, getting had the the whole three-headed dragon, the the debt, the pensions, and I, I'm blanking on the third part of the dragon, but um I I think that this is totally in line with the commitment we made when we, we, as a council and as the administration, decided that we had to write our finances. Um, so, I don't know. I I think this has been a useful session.
Sorry. That brings us back to the twelve million? That's sitting out there can be used anyway?
That's a magical question, Paul. I think everybody's willing to pay down the debt. The big question is gonna be where that twelve million ends up. And we have control over that also, right? I mean, we're looking at future budgets, the next three years to hold off tax increases, correct?
Well, it's fifteen, yes.
It's actually fifteen million.
Am I, can you, no? Yeah, that, yeah, if you remember, I mean, and we've talked about, where I, the the ordinance that we passed act um last fall, restrict, put this money into restricted fund balance, you know, two million in twenty-one and nine and a half million in twenty-two and twenty-three, so this money are in restricted fund here, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to budget that and appropriate it accordingly. So it, obviously, you as a group pass, you pass the budget that we present to you, so yeah, it can't just be spent indiscriminately. Am I, Jim?
You're breaking up on our end. I don't know about.
Okay.
I guess on my part, or it still comes down to where the seventy-nine million comes in from the Recovery Act. And whether this can play as a positive, or if we need to pay down this debt within the next two weeks or the next month, I mean, that's, that's a magical question. And then also, just to make sure that the fifteen million left over isn't an open checkbook or anything other than future budgets per se.
So far, so good. I really think uh we're coming along nicely in this session. Mel, what would you like to say?
And piggybacking off of Attorney Bettsa, we may have three new people coming on counsel. And if those three new people bond and get one more, it could mess up everything that we dealing with now. I'm not looking at three years and four years down the road. I'm looking at now. If I hit the lotto, you don't think I'm gonna pay off my credit cards, or I'm gonna keep paying them monthly at a time? Same scenario. Pay off now, get rid of it, and continue to plan with what we have left. Take care today, because none of us are guaranteed to be alive tomorrow. There's no guarantee. None. Let's take care of what we can, so we are around to see the good things that we've done. We may not be around to see what we've done if we continue to wait. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Paul, do you have a realistic timeline for COVID information? Or are we just dancing in the door?
Well, I mean, the the bill was passed, but the the, no, no. I mean, I I don't want to say it's gonna be tomorrow. I don't want to see it's next week. It it's not, again, they're, they want to pass, they're gonna pass the money out, Ed, so they need to tell us right away what we can do. But I can't tell you it's gonna be twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, or two weeks. I I can't say that. I don't think any, nobody can.
One of the things I would recommend to counsel is to check your email for Pennsylvania Municipal League, uh, because that's where I've been going to get my information. And I've actually heard the same presentation twice by Michael Gleason from National League of Cities. Um, it's well done, it's presented in a way for municipal officials to understand it. And again, as, I'm just gonna reiterate what Paul said, nobody knows when these regs are gonna come down, but they expect within about sixty days. So just keep in mind, I mean, I I can't remember how many municipalities are getting these funds. I think it might be like nineteen thousand, so every municipality in the country is in the same boat, waiting to find out how this money can be spent, and how you have to document it, and how long you're gonna have to either, you know, allocate it or actually spend it. That that's another question. Does it all have to be spent by twenty or December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, or does it have to be planned to be spent in some fashion? Um, I I don't know, I just have found that this National League of Cities presentation is really helpful, because they do it with a PowerPoint, so you have the the text in front of you. And I think that they let you ask questions. I I can't remember, but um you know, it, the the general attitude is that this is really going to be a game changer, because um, there's, there's the part of this money now they need to clarify could be for uh water and sewer projects that might not be COVID-related, but they aren't sure. But just so you know that nobody is, we aren't lagging. Um, we're, everybody's waiting to to get the regulations that are gonna come down from Treasury, but it's just, I think, helpful if the administration can communicate, as Renee has done, actually. Um, you know, as as you learn things, because, you know, none of us are full-time, so we can't be full ti- full-time monitoring this, but um, this, this is gonna be a good thing, but again, we can't dig ourselves out of a structural deficit with with the COVID funds. That's not how it's intended. Can't use it for pensions, so we still have to be addressing those structural issues, so. I don't know. I've become an acolyte for this spending, because I just, um, listening to the experts has really helped me to see the potential to for Erie to reach its potential, because, you know, we were steaming along and then COVID hit, and we we need to figure out how to how to get back on track.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Keys.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's the three, that's the third part of the three-headed dragon, the structural deficit. And so that is why I am leery. We have not solved the structural deficit. And so when we have things in place like LURDA, which means we're gonna have a declining tax base for the next ten years. And so how do we as counsel plan by, beyond five years for plugging the structural deficit year six, seven, eight, nine, and ten? That's the question we really have to ask and get answered before we drain our coffers.
Makes it difficult, Mike. We're in the same, you know, Liz, I think you said nineteen thousand townships or whatever are getting money, but probably eighteen thousand and nine hundred ninety-nine of them aren't sitting on ninety million from the water either as we are. So our, our complications are real. And I applaud every one of you folks for being concerned about it, because I am too, definitely. You know, which is the best way to go? Mel's right. He and I are gonna be pushing up grass. Long after you people are gonna be dealing with the things that are going on. If we don't spend this money the right way, uh, they're gonna bury us face down, so we can't even push the grass up, Mel. That's a joke. It's a, it's a real concern, folks. It's real, and if we wouldn't be here doing this right now, if every one of us were not really concerned about the best for the city and for for our young people that are are coming coming down to Plank and hopefully staying in Erie now, instead of moving out.
Well, I think we, we do continue to get, um, I mean, we're moving into, if I'm correct, into phase two of the uh that recommendations on, you know, our city's finances, which now has a new acronym, STAMP. Um, Renee, can you tell us what STAMP stands for? I know there's not an A in there, but it's.
Some kind of strategic management, something or other. I can't remember now either. I still, I still think of it as EIP. But yes, we are, we're, we're undertaking a number of the initiatives that were in PFM's final report. We're working on ways to um fix the structural deficit through those. Um, I guess I'm, I'm kind of looking for clarification on the reason for waiting to pay down the debt. We know we can't use ARP funding for that. Um, we've been told that upfront. And I think, I thought that we all agreed that the most important thing we could do was to 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 solve the debt issue um with the Erie Water Works. with the Erie Water Works funding. If we're able to use some of the ARP money, which we believe we can to cover our losses from COVID, then that should free up some of the fifteen million. We have no way of knowing right now how much that would be. It would be a portion of the fifteen million. And then at that point in time, council would decide how to spend that money if we didn't need it to cover our structural deficit that year. I mean, if you want to pay down more debt, we could pay down more debt at that time. We could set up a revolving loan fund for homeowners to do home renovations or neighborhood revitalization or, you know, whatever the need is at that time, council would decide that. But I think, you know, as, as Mel has said, and, and Dave and Liz and Kathy, I think time really is of the essence. We don't want to lose the deal that we can get with the current interest rates to, to, to pay down that debt as, as soon as possible. I, I mean, if there are other questions that we can answer, I, I guess I'm, I, I don't understand the reason for waiting. I guess that's what I'm looking for clarification on so we can get you additional information.
Fact that we're throwing on the agenda a day after the timeline, for one thing. Uh, you folks are working real hard up on the floor. But you give us a beautiful, whereas agenda item. Uh, and you want us to chew on it and come up with a major decision in typically a matter of minutes instead of days or weeks. I don't know if the rest of council feels that way, but I definitely feel that way. You had to go in at the last minute and you went out.
No.
When you're, uh, PFJ money, what they're, we'll pass that one. This doesn't happen only for.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking what the questions are so that we can answer them.
We've been doing that for the last hour.
Renee, and maybe Paul can answer. Just say we put money on the debt within the next month. And then we find out from the ARP that they can uh, offset some of that balance we left out of paying off the debt, that fifteen million. Is there an advantage to pay more against the debt at one time? Or if you pay, you know, sixty-four a year and then another fifteen in three months? Or if you pay seventy-nine million at one time or eighty million at one time, are you farther ahead?
Jim, um, well, that would depend on the, the movement of the interest rates in the, in the market, for one, to know where we're gonna get better, you know, we're gonna get better rates on treasuries. But again, to go back to the point Tim mentioned, he stole my thunder talking about the financial statements. If, if we only paid sixty million dollars down on the debt right now, then there'd still be fif- nineteen million dollars, if, if you want to use that number, seventy-nine million. There'd still be nineteen million dollars that wouldn't have been defeesed, that wouldn't have been paid off. So we're looking at paying down debt. We're looking at getting that debt off of our balance sheet. So the, the interest rates could move back down again. In which case, then the seven and a half million dollar savings we're looking at getting, give or take this week, maybe less.
Still a, uh, contract away, you know.
Yes.
Do what we have now and if the market goes the way it has been, it could be, I don't think it's gonna hold off. But I don't know who are the financial advisors. Should they accept and say, hey, you better do something quick because in September it's gonna crash. I don't know.
Yeah. No, you're right there. I mean, I'm not gonna, you, you're, you're correct. That if the market moves upward, the, the rates on treasuries could go upward. And that could be, it could be helpful. But it's helpful, you know, it, it doesn't help us in the balance sheet.
Kathy, you had, Kathy Schoff, you had suggested that we put it on the, what would it be? The April twenty-first agenda for the first read, right?
Yes.
Second read in May?
Yes, that's my suggestion. I, I feel our economy is so volatile. Another Suez Canal incident could happen. There could be war sometime. You, you, we don't know. We don't know the future. We have this money. I was thinking that we need to use it. And I want to use it to help pay down the debt. Like was mentioned, you have a house, pay it off. That's the way I grew up to not have debt as much as possible.
I guess I'll throw one more question out there. Thank you, Mr. President. We addressed the paving issues after twenty twenty-two. We're doing about close to five million a year. Do we know how that would fit into the equation? Oh, Paul or?
We're, we're, we're working on the paving plan for the future as we speak.
Who knows? Maybe some of that ARP money could be allocated for that. That'd be great. Again, we still don't know where that money.
Correct.
With those allocations.
We'd like to get some kind of an update on the Bean Drive, too. The telephone calls after the mayor, or the records say that we might not do anything. People want to know.
We're preparing an update for Thursday.
Thursday? Yeah.
Let's get our good mojo back. I really am thankful for Tim Senet today in providing a wonderful explanation for Ed Betsa saying that this is what we've been wanting to do all along as a council. So it doesn't get interrupted in the future. Thank you, Paul, and your team. Uh, Jay Wenger, I noticed that you're on. If you have anything to say, you could try to do it at this time. If not, maybe Jay and Tim could leave the Zoom and then we could just do our regular finance meeting. That, uh, we have any questions for Paul, Paul, as to our March report?
Before we go to finance, Kathy, we should probably do a quick review of the agenda, see if anybody has questions about it. That's one of the reasons we're doing this tonight.
Sure.
Renee, we do understand that your finance money there is critical in the past, so it should go through, right? It's time, time sensitive.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Time-sensitive ordinance.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, Tim.
Uh, I was just gonna say thank you for inviting me. And if there's no other questions, I am gonna leave the meeting. Uh, uh, thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Tim.
Tim, thank you so much. Thank you.
Agenda's in there. If we can go to the finance meeting then, Kathy, what are you gonna do? No questions on the agenda, am I right, guys, ladies? Good, okay. You're the boss again, Kathy. What are we talking about in the finance meeting, Paul?
I was going to talk about, I, we just got everything in for this month, uh, this morning. So I sent out the monthly summary. I didn't send out the full monthly revenue expenditure report. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at this thing yet. Uh, but the general fund at this moment in time is about seven million dollars to the good revenues over expenditures. At the same time, last year, we were twenty-one million dollars revenue over expenditures. So when you look at this, you're gonna see that big difference. But the, the reason being, we're thirteen million dollars behind in collections of real estate taxes, which are all because of the fact we moved the discount date back a month. So the end of April, there'll be, you know, I use the word timing all the time. This is an absolute timing. The mortgage companies are not, they don't pay until the last minute because they want to keep that money for themselves before they hand it over to us. So otherwise, you look at your, uh, you're gonna take a look at your salary line item. The salaries are actually down this year. Benefits are down a little bit this year. So those are good things that, um, please take a look at those when you get a chance. Uh, the sewer revenue, uh, collections are up a little bit this year. That's a good thing. Expenditures about the same as they have been. Refuge fees, collections are up a little bit this year, couple hundred thousand dollars. Expenditures hanging right around where they were. And golf fund up a little bit this year. So revenues, revenue-wise, uh, I, I know that was very, very, very quick. But we'll get out the full book tomorrow or the next day. And I'll do my write-up where, you know, the three, four-page write-up on the book. And I'll go through each department and each revenue line item. And then hopefully that'll give you a better feel for how we're doing twenty-five percent through the year. But the biggest thing, when you look at that summary, uh, it looks as though we're way behind and it's really not. It's, it all has to do with the real estate tax collections.
Paul, Liz did send wonderful questions to you, which I know you aren't able to answer right away. But if you could explore and be able to answer in the near future, that would be great.
Yeah, most of those we are tracking, but the, you know, Liz, there were fifteen or so questions. And I didn't want to give you the answer to seven, eight, nine of them and not give you the answer to all of them. So we'll work on those others for you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Teresa Stankovich, do you have anything to report today?
No, I don't have anything today. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
You look marvelous.
All right. If we don't have any more questions for Paul, we could dismiss this meeting and see you tomorrow morning. Tomorrow?
I'm sorry, Kim.
Um, we have two speakers tomorrow, so please attend caucus on time. Thank you.
Kathy, can I say one thing?
Yes.
In, in, you know, in anticipation of that council meeting two weeks from now, uh, are, I'd like to put that ordinance back on, at least using the seventy-nine million. I mean, the fifteen million, I know a multitude of council people have questions that they need answered. But the seventy-nine million, we know we're going to use that money to pay down debt, right? Can I put that, I mean, we'll, we'll, you know, whatever we do, wherever we go with the rest of the money, can I get that seventy-nine million on and we'll vote yes and, and use that to defees that debt right off the bat?
I think I'd be good with that. I'd be very good with that.
I think everybody's giving a yep.
Okay.
No, yep.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, but I'll talk to Tim. I'll talk to Tim and get that ordinance put back on. So the seventy-nine million will be used to defees debt and then the others.
Always add to it.
Yeah, we can, absolutely, absolutely.
Hopefully, we can add to it. That's our goal.
Lisa had to get off and, and Lisa's watched, Liz, I know you've watched some of those League of Cities. And Lisa's watched every one of those every day. And I know Renee's been involved, you know, everybody's, hey, if we can use that money for something, you know, general fund-wise, that'd be the greatest thing in the world. And you, please don't quote me on that, but you know, we're, we're keeping track of it. We're watching what's going on. Um, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll do whatever council says. But we'll get the seventy-nine million on, we'll get that to fees because I don't, um, Liz, are you still liaison to sewer?
No, it's Michael Keys.
Okay, Michael, um, you were probably at the last meeting. Sewer is looking at issuing, you know, the second pa- part of the capital project that you, you as a group approved last year. They're looking at coming to, to council for the second set of bond monies that they're gonna need for more capital projects. And I've already been notified that the mayor and I are gonna have to sit in on a Standard and Poor's rating call sometime in May or the beginning of June. And it would be really, really good for, for us and for the sewer authority. If I could say, hey, look, we just took eighty million dollars and paid down a whole bunch of debt. And, and, you know, they, they understand that we gave up a revenue stream to pay down that debt. But a lot of that revenue stream so far in the future, the, the pay down of the current debt real short-term, I know five to ten years isn't short-term. But when you're talking about a forty-year, you know, the, the lease that we still have, this is gonna be a big deal with Standard and Poor's there. We've already, I've already had, um, one of our bond underwriters, you've all met Nick Felgione. He called his, his contact up in New York and they will look favorably. I'm not saying it's gonna be good for rating upgrade, you know, but they're, they're not gonna look negatively at what we're doing. So I will get the ordinance back on. We'll get the seventy-nine million. Um, the fifteen million, it, it, as you all know, you passed an ordinance. That money is in a restricted account. It cannot be spent. And we'll figure out what to do with that money, you know, as a group, and then we'll go from there.
Why don't we hold the phone here for a second? Everybody's agreeing with you. I pulled it verbally. And until Lori pulls it verbally tomorrow morning, it could still be on tomorrow. If it's willing to board.
Ed?
You mean Ed Betsa?
Yeah.
It, it's been, in order to pass an ordinance, it has to be legally advertised to the public. If you're gonna pull it and you advertise that you've pulled it, then that would be pulled. To my knowledge, you've legally advertised it to the public. Mr. Brzezinski has said he would like to pull it, but that pulling has not officially occurred. If councils wish us to leave it on and vote on it, I believe legally you can do that.
Roll it aboard. Liz, what do you think?
I, I was just deferring to Kathy Schoff. I was prepared to vote on it, so. But Kathy had said to push it back till the next day, you know, meeting. But if we already know we're gonna approve it, I'm okay with tomorrow. I'm okay with two weeks from now.
That's why tomorrow's only the first reading anyway, so if there was.
Well, I'm ready, I'm ready to vote on it.
Well, let's do that then. I, the reason I said to do it because I thought it was already pulled. But if it's not pulled and it's been publicly advertised and we're not in any trouble in any way, let's do it tomorrow.
Yeah, in my, in my opinion, as I mentioned earlier, was having this final discussion about it and having Tim explain things so that we're clear. I mean, I, I just don't like voting things if I'm not perfectly clear. So it definitely helped having this discussion.
All right, roll the board. Let's do that tomorrow morning.
And I think this shows the value of having those meetings occasionally the night before a meeting. Stuff's already on the agenda, but it really proved helpful, so. Thank you, Liz.
Good job, Kathy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy.
I'm just thankful for the people that were able to be on, for Jay, for Tim, for Paul, Lisa, everybody. Each council person who took the time to be here at this time because it's a team effort. When there's practice, you go to practice so you're ready to play the game.
When there's practice, you go to practice so you're ready to play the game.
Yeah, my chicken's getting cold, Kathy.
I dismiss this meeting. See you tomorrow. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Thanks, good night.
Take care, everyone.